All right, well, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. It's great to see everybody at the, uh, the first strategic planning retreat. Uh, I'm excited. This is gonna be fantastic. Couple of open comments and then we're gonna just turn it over to Christian and let him run the show. But, um, you know, when we first started off with the new commission, this is something that we all talked about and getting a five-year vision together, getting on the same page, being able to move forward, and this is one of those crucial steps. Christian, I want to give you and your team full credit for the work that y'all have been doing, and I know you'll recognize everybody in time, but you've done a tremendous job getting out into the public, trying to find out what's on the minds of the citizens of Tallahassee, taking all that data and that information and compiling it, giving us broad categories. I know you've been working with the commission, um, day in and day out also, and here we are to really make some, uh, bold moves forward and have a great conversation. This is very laid back. This is going to be a very relaxing morning and looking forward to the conversation. I'll let you walk us through also the schedule and, and expectations and where we're going from there, but first I'd like to open it up to the commission and then also the appointments for any opening comments and then we'll go from there. Mr. Mayor, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I was talking to Commissioner Matlow, uh, just prior to the meeting starting, and I told him that I felt like this was long overdue. I've always admired the county and the process that they've gone through and how each year, you know, they look back, they have a document that they look back over the year to see what kind of progress they've made and where they need to go in the next year, in the next five years and so, I, and I know that we've done that as a city, uh, but now we're formalizing it, uh, here as a commission, uh, and staff, uh, Mr. Manager, and so I'm excited about that and, uh, I want to, again, also congratulate Christian on the job that they've done. I mean, the amount of, uh, citizen input that's gone into this, anybody who wanted to contribute had the opportunity to do it. And so I hope at, at the end of this process, we're all on the same page and agree that this is where we're going, uh, as a community, uh, and the strategies that we'll use for getting there. So, thank you, Christian, and your staff.
Excellent. Commissioner Matlow, good morning.
Good morning. Uh, I like the setup of this table is a little different. Uh, uh, first time for everything, but, you know, so often when we get together, it's hard to just look each other in the eye and have a conversation about where we're going because of the, the formal process we have at City Hall, so, um, thankful to be here and be able to discuss, um, these issues with you. Um, I saw the mission visions, values people at, uh, the downtown park one day and it was just a really great look, the city out there in attendance, asking for feedback, um, from the community and I'm, uh, excited about the direction we're going in.
Great. Commissioner Williams-Cox, good morning.
Good morning. Let me turn around and say, "Good morning." I'm glad to see you back here. Y'all got my back? I don't like sitting with my back to the door, so I gotta know that you got my back. Okay, all right. It is indeed, uh-
Especially in these days and times.
Amen, amen. It is indeed a pleasure to be here this morning and I too want to thank Christian and his team right here on the front row. Why don't y'all stand up, team, so we know who we need to shoot these arrows at? There will be arrows of love. We come as friends. And thank you so much for, uh, the, as I said to you, the intentional way that you all went into the community to get this information and bring it back. You, uh, I think you left no stone unturned. If someone just moved to town and you didn't get a chance to get with them, you will have a chance before you get the final report, but you all did an outstanding job. I know you took feedback from us and you incorporated it, so I'm looking forward to moving forward with what we have here this morning. So again, thank you and thank you to our city manager and your staff, deputy city manager and, uh, assistant city managers and the appointments, uh, your honor, thank you as well. And Madam Sec- I almost said Madam Secretary, Madam Attorney, thank you as well and my fellow commissioners, good morning.
Commissioner Bryant, good to see ya.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's something about being last. Everybody's been thanked. But let me just ditto the thank yous, first of all, to Christian and his team. Uh, they, they meet with me often and they, they probably, uh, I won't say dread, but it's like, "Uh-oh, we need to meet with Commissioner Bryant, let's go do it." But they have done an exemplary job. First of all, with input, uh, from so many constituents until it's really unprecedented. Uh, I've done a lot of strategic planning in my career. Very seldom do we have the outreach that you guys have done. And then for us this morning to have the opportunity as a commission and those that are part even of the community to participate, uh, this also is unparalleled. So commendations to you and your staff, uh, and I look forward to a great day. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Before I turn it over to the city manager and the city attorney and to the Treasury Clerk's office, and Dennis would welcome any comments from the auditor as well, uh, let me remind everybody that's here, especially those that are from the public, that we will not be taking public comment at this meeting. This is a retreat workshop. By the sunshine, we don't ever have an opportunity just to sit down and talk to one another. There is no action item today. Today is just an opportunity to have a publicly noticed meeting, invite everybody to come, but really to give us the opportunity to sit down and say, "Hey, what's on your mind? What are you thinking about? How do we move this community forward?" So I think it's important to lay that groundwork up front. There will not be any votes that will be taken. This is strictly our conversation and to provide feedback, uh, for Christian and his team to be able to move forward, okay? Uh, with that, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's well said, actually. I think that frames the, the meeting very well because we don't get these opportunities very often and this meeting actually was not scheduled, um, at the beginning of the year. As you know, we put out our schedule well in advance. It comes out the fall for the next calendar year. It was not on the schedule, uh, but at your January retreat, you gave us the direction, the guidance, the leadership to say, "Let's put in motion a strategic plan that carries us for the next five years." And by the way, Mr. Manager, is what you said, get it done before the end of the year. Uh, we took those, uh, words to heart. There's been a lot of work. We're gonna demonstrate that today. You've been getting updates and Commissioner Bryant, they've not dreaded meeting with you at all, uh, uh, or the rest of you because you guys have given excellent guidance and leadership about where we should be and I think it's formed us really well. I think you'll be pleased with today's discussion, but today, just to underscore what's been said, this is about long-range planning. Most days we get up and we deal with those pressures of the day. Uh, we thought last week we were gonna be dealing with a hurricane today and we were ready. Uh, I was very impressed with the organization and I was impressed with the community. We were ready and, and thank God we don't have to deal with that today and we, we get to talk about what's gonna happen five years from now, uh, not today. So that's, that's really what we're, we're trying to accomplish. I'll remind you that, um, uh, you also put us on a course to update our mission, vision, and values. They had last been updated 22 years prior. They served us very well, uh, but we updated those with the help of a committee with, which included citizens. Normally you do those things with internal stakeholders. We included citizens at your direction. I was very pleased with the outcome of that. We'll review that again today. Um, and we've made a lot of progress. Several of you have mentioned the level of public input that we've had. You know, really, we started with a lot of in-person input and, and we had good input and then, uh, you'll probably recall at one of your meetings, I've lost track of time, but it was in the spring, you said, "We need more input." And the team went and got more input, so I think you'll see that today too. So we've got a lot of community input to frame where we're headed. So there's been considerable work. This is again, an opportunity to check in with a long-range vision and, and Mr. Mayor, you framed it right. This is for input, this is feedback, this is discussion, to make sure we're on the right path and we're on time, we're on track to deliver a product this October so that we have a strategic plan that's in place to take us to 2024. So, uh, as you mentioned, Christian Doolan, his team Strategic Innovation, uh, Group, they have led the charge. They have done that with great assistance from our department directors, our leadership team, who you see largely in attendance today. They've had good support from all of their colleagues and this takes the entire organization. We've had strategic plans in place. We've had master plans in place for a very big, broad organization. This will pull all of that together. This will give us the tool to check in and make sure we're progressing to those goals that we think are important. So, that sets the tone. I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor, and, and when we're prepared, Christian will give us an overview of the schedule and, and we'll dig right in.
Mr. Manager, I do want to comment, um, and thank you and your team for being prepared. You are correct. We, we are not dealing with the hurricane today, but if we did, we were ready. And, uh, the city, the entire family did an absolutely amazing job and, you know, it's still early, we still have a couple of months left, there's still the opportunity that we could be affected, but congratulations and thank you. Madam Attorney, since this commission has been seated, we've had three very public, uh, lawsuits that have been filed against the city. You have been successful, uh, in all three of them, either by settling them or, uh, literally upholding our position in court. You and your team have done a tremendous job representing us and I want to publicly thank you for that as well. So, turn the floor over to you as well.
Well, you know, usually, usually when my, I have interactions with people, it's not always on the most pleasant of circumstances, uh, but what I have found and, and what I so appreciate about what this new commission is doing is they are engaging the public and they're engaging employees. And I think when we have employees and we have the public that feel a part of this mission that you have, we have less of those type of combative interactions and really that's what we're all about. You know, my office is about preventing, uh, in large part, sometimes these interactions that are not pleasant. And so the degree to which we have people who are involved and what I see with this commission is you want that involvement. What I see is you're concerned about the employees, uh, and they are engaged and that means less of those kind of interactions that we have. So, I applaud you and all that you are doing and continue to look forward to working with you.
Thank you, thank you. Kent, thank you for serving today in Jim's absence. We do appreciate it. Hey, let me tell you, your office is, um, extremely important and not necessarily recognized on a day-to-day basis from all the citizens. This city is financially sound. Our benefits that we provide to our employees and our family are second to none. Our bond rating is absolutely incredible and y'all do an amazing job keeping the wheels on the bus. And when it comes to public records and serving the citizens with those requests, you do an amazing job and we do appreciate it. Any, any comments? Turn the floor over.
Briefly, uh, thank you for that and, uh, we appreciate the support that we've been given by the city commission as well and working with, uh, folks on the city manager's side and it is my honor to, uh, provide whatever support we can in this process as we move forward.
Appreciate it, thank you. Dennis, as the new auditor, uh, you have a long tradition in your office. You're not new to us. We're doing an amazing job and, uh, in, in, in times when we need audits from the commission, your office has always been there. We also set out the schedule on an annual basis and y'all always do a fantastic job. Do want to give you the opportunity to say a few words if you'd like as well.
I just want to say thank you to everybody you all support as well in trying to, uh, advance the city's objectives. We look to advance effectiveness and efficiency of the city and we look forward to supporting the strategic plan that you all developed.
Excellent, thank you. Give the assistant city managers an opportunity, any comments?
Good morning.
Cynthia.
Good morning.
Yeah, I too, um, I've been, uh, Mike, Ms. Allison, uh, I've, I've been here, as you know, 28 years and we've always had strategic plans, but I have to say, this is, um, one of the most outstanding processes that I have seen. I'm, I'm a proponent of community engagement and it's been quite a bit of that. You're to be commended as well as your team, although I, I may not have acted that way every time you asked to meet with me, um, to review the plan. I did appreciate, uh, the opportunity to have feedback and so did your peers and I'm just excited about seeing the, the future of our city layout for the next five years and what all will accomplish.
Excellent, thank you.
Good morning. Uh, as you are, uh, probably very fondly aware of by now, um, the manager's expectations that we get the job done quickly and efficiently and effectively, um, I look forward to the same thing with the, the policies and, and the, uh, the future that you see for the city. Uh, our job is to make sure our team gets it done for you. Uh, so, uh, we're excited about the direction that we get and we're looking forward to getting it done.
Well?
So I'm really the last one now? Uh, I just appreciate the support that the commission has given us in the strategic planning initiative. As the manager and Cynthia have said, we've done this before. I've never seen it in my 27 years here, uh, such a engaged effort, both from Christian's team and getting community involvement and from the department director's perspective. So I appreciate all the effort that's been made over the last, uh, year, actually a quick nine months, uh, to get this done, uh, and look forward to implementing the plan once it gets approved.
Excellent. Final comments, first of all, let me remind each and every one of you, and I say this publicly, it, I love serving with all four of you. The four of us are friends and professional colleagues. That doesn't mean we always agree on every issue and that's how the system's supposed to work. Uh, we all stand up for what we believe in and, uh, let the process move forward, but it is a pleasure to serve and, uh, I'm thoroughly enjoying myself and I hope you all are as well. Let me remind you that at this retreat, there are no such thing as bad ideas. I encourage everybody to not only put out all ideas that they want, but let's also respect each other's ideas. This is just a great conversation that we're having. Uh, everybody know the restrooms are right outside, plenty of coffee and food, feel free to get, uh, up when you need to. And with that, Christian, I believe we're ahead of schedule already. We'll turn it over to you and thanks for putting together today.
Thank you very much and, uh, good morning, everybody. Appreciate the chance to, this is invaluable for the strategy. Um, as has already been said, we're gathered here to get your feedback and input on our priority areas, our goals and our, which will translate into objectives and targets that we are gonna be focused on as an organization for the next five years. Um, that's gonna culminate in a five-year strategic plan, uh, that will be the capsule for when we turn 200 years old. Also to second the city manager's, um, statement, I mean, we are a strategic organization. We have north of 40 different strategic documents and, um, the majority of this audience, uh, who's the leadership team, knows that very well and, uh, their support through this effort has also been indispensable. Um, and we continue to engage them right alongside with the community and now your direction today. So the plan is on track to be very strong and thoroughly extensively engaged with lots of stakeholder input. Um, before today, as you know, on the retreat, you tasked, uh, the city manager and staff with looking at, uh, a new mission, vision, and value for the organization. Um, over 20 different sessions from February through June have been conducted. Eight of those were the working group of community and staff that looked at those mission statements, the vision statement, our value statements, which you adopted over two different commission meetings, um, and now we, as a city, have our five-year vision that we are developing this strategic plan for. Uh, we socialized, that, that working group socialized that vision at four different community pop-up events. Um, afterwards, we conducted seven field surveys and paired that with an online survey, uh, where we had around 2,500 respondents. Through that engagement, we learned our, where, the pulse of where we see, we, what we do very well and perform well as an organization and opportunities. Performing well, you'll see some of that information synthesized, um, across our exercise today on these goal area boards, which I'll go into in a minute, as well as the opportunities. Areas of strength, um, which you probably hear reg- on a regular basis and consistently, our parks, our public spaces, our electric and water utilities, and our environmental friendliness as a community. We're consistent themes and things that our community loves and that our organization does well. And then the opportunities that this plan will also be focused on, like affordable housing, economic opportunities for all, and, um, the roads and sidewalks, public safety. We'll have those conversations today. The priority areas you see today are a result of your direction. We have impact on poverty, we have quality of life, we have public safety, public infrastructure, public trust, and economic development. This morning, we're gonna move through a facilitation exercise for about 45 minutes, which I'll break down, and then we'll take a 10-minute break. Some of my team can get our thoughts together and then have a, um, conversation afterwards. So the agenda is pretty simple. It's a facilitation exercise to get your input and then a conversation at the table. Um, the topic obviously is very complex and it's one that we continue to chop wood on and get ready for our, um, strategic plan that we'll have before you in October. So with that, um, I'm gonna pause before I go into kind of a description of this exercise to see if there's any questions or comments, um, before I dive into some direction on how we'll proceed for the day. All right, well, if, um, if I can get this, um, Diana, if you could raise the, yes. So what you'll see behind, um, behind me is, and behind the screen when we raise this up, are six different, um, posters. And each poster represents a goal area in the plan. At the top, we'll have a facilitator at each one and at the top, we'll have some information that we've distilled from our extensive listening and engagement with the community, with the departments, our back and forth with the directors and their teams, and that represents information of what we're hearing and what we're seeing. Areas of opportunity, areas of strength, and potential solutions that we can start weaving in towards objectives and targets that we can measure across five years. And there'll be two simple points of conversation at each board, um, just initial impressions and then your vision for, in five years, the ci- what the city will achieve in each one of these goal areas. So we will have a, one of, um, each one of our team members, so that's Anna, Diana, Levania, Justin, and Jason, they will be at each, each board to help proctor this conversation and you will spend five minutes individually at each. We have a timekeeper, so after five minutes, we'll call time and you'll just move clockwise to the next poster. And you will put, you know, your concepts, your responses, your, uh, feedback in the form of a post-it note or two or three or however many you'd like, um, and we'll aggregate those over the 45-minute exercise. After that, we'll take 10 minutes, collect ourselves, and we'll bring that up for discussion here. So, um, before we dive in, any, any thoughts, comments, or questions regarding the format?
We're ready, Rock and Roll.
Christian, just for the orientation of the audience, will you, because I don't think they can see the words on the poster boards, will you call out from left to right, uh, what the, the different priority areas are?
Sure. So, again, the priority areas, we have impact on poverty, quality of life, public safety, public trust, public infrastructure, and economic development. Now each one of these will ultimately, in, in the form of a strategic plan, translate into multiple objectives in the rough order of magnitude of anywhere from three to five. And then each one of those objectives will have multiple targets that we will be tracking to over five years. Today, our conversation is focused at the priority and goal level and insights from our staff, the community, and our extensive listening sessions that are shaping the development of our objectives and our targets. We also have at the back, um, printouts, one sheet, printouts on each one of these goal areas, so, so for anyone that wants to follow along, please grab those in the back. If you'd like to conduct the exercise on your own and then give it to us, we'd love to collect that as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good encouragement. So, as the mayor and city commissioners are providing their input, we'd love to get your input on the handouts and we'll collect it at the end just to add to the depth of the information we already have.
Thank you. Okay, and if the team, if you'll come up, we'll be ready. And Allison, if you can, um, just in maybe two minutes, start the time. And commissioners, you can, um, we're not gonna assign you to any specific goal area, if you just wanna find the one you're ready to go, and we will provide you with post-it notes and markers at each one of these. um, goal area here, I think you can stand here. We'll go through each goal area and just kind of read out, the facilitator's gonna read out the initial impressions of this goal area and then kind of the statement of in five years the city will. So the, our five-year vision statements and the input and feedback you gave. And then, um, we'll, we'll kind of just turn it over for response and move through these at a pretty good clip here, but we've gotten a lot of great, uh, feedback and looking forward to hearing any extra comments or connections you want to make. So Levania, um, again, this is for impact of poverty.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Again, this is impact on poverty and so the goal was to be a leading community partner that actively connects residents to resources that remove economic and social barriers. And so some of the initial impressions, uh, one of the things, there was a lot of key themes that I thought was, uh, really good, um, as far as the group, what they, was some of the consensus. So they said we did a good, good job, you know, as far as the, the action items, but we need a more global view on what causes poverty. Also, some of the initial impressions was that we need a better understanding of our healthcare in this community and how does the city fit in that or do we fit in that or how, what is our role in that? And also understanding our role in the school district. So again, how, what's the city's role, how, what, what part do we play as far as developing a plan around that? Uh, also, what is affordable? So we're talking about affordable housing under impacts of poverty, so what does that include? You know, is that working, the people that are working, people that are below poverty? So what, what does that really look like? Um, also, uh, job availability, which equals affordable housing, access to healthcare, which kind of goes along with what, you know, our role in that. Uh, how do we improve education training? Uh, increase in minimum wage and acknowledging that poverty is an issue and access to quality education for parents and children. So we talked about how this can become a generational thing and so just even including parents in this discussion. Uh, community trust that goes with, uh, the rehabilitation of housing in our inventory and veterans' housing buildings, so making sure we keep that as part of the initial conversation. And, uh, lastly, we're saying that we do do a decent job of acknowledging that we do have challenges in the city. So then moving on to where we see ourselves in five years, uh, more high-skill jobs, um, also recognizing the return of our investments for improvement and understanding why poverty is concentrated, uh, thinking about changing the zone, the zoning for school districts so it can be more diverse. Uh, we talked about moving the needle from poverty to eradication, retaining talent that provides opportunities for blue collar. And also, uh, universal job programs for youth age 16 to 24. So if they want to go right into the workforce, how do we do that? Creating new opportunities such as bringing new companies here and having a more robust workforce housing master plan. Uh, also, we talked about, um, having diverse housing options, like set-aside housing units for more affordable housing. Again, what does that look like? But more inclusion, so not having, just everybody having housing at a certain level so that it's, you know, a good blend of people. And supporting the children's basic needs, uh, for the future and lever- leveraging grants. This was a goo- a one, a thing that kept coming up in terms of using, um, interacting, you know, us all working together as far as the county and the city, uh, the different partners and how do we all work together to come up with, um, solutions to some of the things that were discussed here. And then lastly, we talked about the farmer's market, Southside Farmer's Market, having a more permanent location, so it's not like a own off-season kind of thing because people need, um, nutritious food all year long. So I think that was, yeah.
Thank you. And so, before we move on to the next, I mean, we represent a lot of content there. It's our task to work with the department input, address these community needs in your direction, boil that into targeted goals, which you will see in the form of a plan. Um, any comments on, on that consensus input or on that group input?
Can I one jump in? I, I think there's some central themes that are coming out of there. Housing. And, you know, we just move forward with the, with our, um-
The community land trust.
Community land trust, yeah. So I know that's a focus and I know that, that's something that we want to work on, obviously. Uh, jobs, economic development.
Education.
Education. I think this is interesting because I put up a couple of comments and I think a couple of y'all did too. You know, my philosophy is- You know, my philosophy is there are certain things we don't have jurisdiction over. I get it. And to a certain extent, you know, we need to trust our community partners in jurisdiction. However, I do believe in the 21st century, there is a role for us to play, supporting the school district in third-grade reading levels, supporting the county in health care. What does that support look like? I don't, I don't know. But I think it's unfair for us to point fingers at, you know, the school district and say, ah, child's education is just their responsibility. We all got skin in that game. Just like they can't look at us and say, oh, well, the city is solely responsible for inner-city crime, they got to fix it. No, we all have skin in the game. And so I'm glad that a lot of us had similar type comments in that direction.
And I agree with you regarding the education, and what we can do is, as some of us are doing, is becoming mentors in the school system and participating in school activities to be visible in the school with our partners, to let them know that we are there to support them and we're there with them. And I, for one, have attended the mentoring training, and we're talking with them right now to come into City Hall and do some mentoring training for employees so that we can get more city employees in the school system mentoring. Excuse me. Can't breathe and talk at the same time.
Right.
One of the things that I've set aside is, on Mondays, I'm mentoring at three schools. And I chose my schools based on their third-grade reading level. Riley Elementary is the elementary school that I'm going to be going into, and NIMs and Griffin are the middle schools that I'm going into. And I've made myself available at other schools if, even if they need, we need to come in and do a little something. But we can all do something, whatever it is, whatever time we can, we can avail ourselves to, to get in there and help these kids because these are, these are our citizens. They're going to take our place one day, and I, for one, want them to be educated well.
And Mr. Mayor, I just, of course, you all know my, my full-time role at Lively, but I, I certainly have come to appreciate the relationship that we've got to have with organizations like Lively and Tallahassee Community College in terms of job training and readiness skills. We, we've got a, we've got, we've got a, a wide range of jobs throughout this community that are going unfilled in the health care industry, in the construction trades, auto mechanics, because we are not training the young people in those areas to take the jobs of people my age who are now about to retire. And so that certainly is a concern of all of us. If we are going to be job-ready, if we have an employer that maybe comes in, wants to come into the community, we've got to have that relationship between the city and the school district and the community college and our Office of Economic Vitality to be able to provide that kind of training. So we can't say it's just the school district.
Right.
And that's their responsibility because it will have an impact on us down the road in our ability to attract business to our community, but also to provide employees for those current local businesses. We've got some issues out there, and what that translates into for the consumer is higher prices, increased prices for roof replacement, or a plumbing service, or an HVAC service, because there are so few people out there doing that. And so we certainly have to have that kind of relationship with the school district and ongoing communication with the school district and with Tallahassee Community College to help them identify the jobs that are needed and encourage young people to, to go into those job training programs.
Jeremy?
Yeah, thank you, and I, I agree with a lot of the comments you made earlier. I, I put, we kind of need to be more global in our thought pattern, and I think you're on that track with the county and the school. But I almost feel like this issue is so important, we need that plan to include those stakeholders and have kind of a master plan amongst all of us and looking, there's a lot of individual actions for affordable housing and jobs and all those things, like we know we can make an impact in, are we do? But how do we look at the entire city and look at the lack of income diversity in certain neighborhoods and how, how we can use zoning or incentives to encourage developments in certain school districts to diversify those incomes and really look at it globally and, and our private sector stakeholders too, like how we could all come together and address that issue, which I think will also take a lot of community education and buy-in. People are concerned about the neighborhoods they go to because of the school district. You know, I live in a, in a neighborhood that's zoned for Sealy, and I, I went to Sealy in third grade, and there's people in my neighborhood who want to send their, their kids somewhere else. So how do we get the community to say, all of these schools are good schools, we have good teachers, and we need your help because you're, we're contributing to the problem when we send our kids, you know, outside of the, the districts we're zoned for, and really push that together? Another thing, we have a lot of jobs programs for youth, and I put this on public safety also, but like, how do we expand upon that? How do we get to, do we start at maybe one school and say, youth between 16 and 20 coming out of that, if you want a job, we can find you a job, and to try, to both impact poverty but also the gun violence and crime problem?
Yeah, right on. Yeah, Elaine?
Yeah. You know, as a part of our vision statement, and, and when I was sitting, listening, it took me back to this, it says, and this is just important, "An innovative economic and educational hub serving diverse and passionate people." So just taking that out on its own merit says to me that even today, not, 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 you know, something we need to wait to do, we have to collaborate with every part of this community, whether it's the neighborhood, whether it's persons in faith-based groups, it could be people that obviously are in the educational arena, to include universities because those people still live in our community. The folks that Commissioner Richardson constantly talks about in terms of providing jobs for trades, I think we have a responsibility for the future Tallahassee. It may not be here today. I think it's our prime, should be a part of our primary look forward to say that we're going to embrace, as a part of not just the impact on poverty, but several of these other main topics that we're talking about, we need to be developing and focused on something that's tangible that next year, when we return to this setting or someone, and, and start to talk strategically, that we can say, in ABC community, we had an impact on poverty in this way. Because this is a global topic, and unless you focus in, we'll have good intentions, but where will our results be? And I, I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is that I, I really want us to, in, in each of the areas, to pinpoint, come to something we're going to do, and then let's do it. Let's, let's embrace, I mean, we embrace the community and, and just in this planning process. So how do we target and move forward in every, in every area? So poverty is directly linked to, and I think research and statistics will show that poverty is not just linked to the fact that people don't want to do well, they want a job. People want to earn money. People want to live in a house. I mean, you start to think about that, and then you recognize the interconnectedness of all of these topics. So it get back, it really gets back to the basics. What are we going to do as a community of which we're a major part of? So everything that everyone else said, to me, kind of dovetails into that concept.
And I also think, for our come over, Reese as well, I think that we do a pretty good job in this community acknowledging that we have challenges and willing to face the challenges. Sometimes those are tough conversations to have. Two other things that I would love to add up there that, that I forgot to put up, they also have crossover with quality of life, is we talk about physical health, we need to talk more about mental health and how mental health affects generational poverty. We also, and it could be quality of life as well, we need to have a robust conversation on those that are experiencing homelessness in our community, whether it's those that are physically sleeping on the streets, whether they're in the temporary shelter, the emergency shelter, the Kearney Center, whether they're in more long-term shelter housing. But I think it all ties in together as well. And you know, some of these ideas, we're going to find out, do cross over on several different of the topics, but I do want to make sure that it's part of the conversation as well.
And if I could just piggyback on what you just said, it's not just the impact of mental health on poverty, but it's the impact of poverty on mental health, because poverty can cause it.
Yeah. Yeah, Reese?
Thank you, Levania.
If I could just add a, a few comments, because this is very helpful, I think. What's embodied in all of your comments is, is we try to define really where we're headed. We'll see the theme, you, you know, you already participated in the exercise, you've been engaged, they overlap. Some of them overlap almost entirely. So in this, this category, we're talking about impact on poverty, we're talking about education and all of the elements of education, job readiness, our children's readiness to read and be prepared for the future. We're talking about housing, and that is a wide continuum. You hear about the conversation, which may go on forever, is affordable housing. And my guess is if we go around this table, none of us define it exactly the same, whether you define it in numbers, or description, or availability, or access, and so you try to grapple with that. This is helping us. Ultimately, we will get to targeted metrics and outcomes. They will be input-based, output-based, but most importantly, be outcome-based. And so this is helpful to us to try to identify what needle, what dashboard are we measuring? What topic are we measuring the most, and how do we, how do we see progress on that? So I just wanted to give that observation because I think when we go down the line, ultimately, we're going to say the same things over and over and over, which is helpful, right? So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so next is quality of life, which is, we started to bring up some stuff just now. And to read this for the audience, if you haven't read the, the sheet yet, the quality of life goal, draft goal now, is to be a creative and inclusive community with beautiful public spaces that protect and promote resources and culture. So initial impressions kind of grouped into three general areas where we're kind of having some great momentum, some specific initiatives, and then kind of our sense of community. Parks and festivals are key drivers in our quality of life, consistent theme there, and a great momentum to develop a, develop historic tourism or the historic districts, so the museums downtown, all the historical, cultural icons downtown. We don't always look at that as a destination collectively, but that, there's a great cultural asset, and that's a consistent theme, whether it's art districts or historical districts, and then nationally recognized parks and rec. Sense of community, initial impressions here, a lot of theme here. So more festivals to celebrate our diversity, strong sense of community, with the need to increase multicultural and diversity and diverse events, increase the public recognition or awareness of our neighborhood initiatives and neighborhood events. And then how do we celebrate our community as a whole and kind of a need for an awareness of the amenities and the assets consistently across our community? So kind of a recognition there, we have a strong community, a lot of strong cultural and communal assets, and then just kind of leveraging that to bring folks together for inclusiveness and diversity. And then specific things to call out here and double down on, so the urban forestry master plan is a key part of our quality of life. And then, then kind of how do we convey the things we're doing? When we go to have community projects, what are the, establishing clear timelines for expectation and crystallizing the benefits of these projects, whether that's a sense of place sidewalk-making initiative, making sure the, our entire community is in on the benefits and the return on that to the community. For where we'll be in five years, you know, there were some kind of visionary statements and then some very specific things to hit on. So, you know, high-level visioning, be a regional destination for arts and music, access to amenities throughout our community, and make sure we have coverage everywhere. Some, some bold, bold goals here. There will be no fear of any part of town, feel safe in all neighborhoods. In five years, the city will increase the protection of our live oak trees, will display more diversity and celebrate that diversity, and be seen as family-friendly and senior-friendly. And then as far as specific things to hit, 100 parks by the 200th anniversary, enhance sidewalks and green space connectivity, downtown, finish the downtown master plan, execute the Bond Neighborhood First Plan, execute the French Town Redevelopment Plan, have a plan, an inclusivity plan that leverages our assets across the community, and then prioritize on a regular basis, and you know, maybe, yeah, on an annual basis, what it is important to focus on each year. So an adaptive ability to address this on an ongoing basis. That is what we're hearing, fantastic input. It kind of dovetails with a lot of the community expectation and what we, we're kind of working on, and very pleased to hear this and excited to hear this. Any comments?
So Ashley, where you going to find the rest of these parks?
Uh-oh.
Hey, let, let me, let me tell you, Diane, that was actually my idea that I put up there. We're actually at 89, 89? Yeah, 88 active. To be able to hit 100 parks in five years, I think we could do it. I really did, have 100 parks by 200. And remember that when they were collecting the community feedback, festivals, parks, greenways, trails, I believe was one of the top, if not the top, thing that the citizens of Tallahassee love. I think that's a very attainable goal with what we have planned and how we move forward, so.
Come on down south, we, we've got a few spots we can fill for you.
And remember, a park doesn't have to be as big as Tom Brown. It could be a pocket park. Yeah, we've got, we've got tremendous opportunity.
I don't disagree it can be done, I was just, I knew Ashley would have some ideas.
Yeah, I'm sure she does.
I agree with the, the festivals, and it's one of the things that I put there as well, to have more festivals to celebrate our diversity and our culture. One of the things that I'm struggling with is that a lot of things are going on downtown, but they're not necessarily diverse in culture, you know, a lot of cultures, they're, they're hit or miss, they're, we, we got concerts and things that are going on downtown, but there are people I don't know. And I, I can be educated, but if I don't know them, then that means that people like me don't know, and will, may, probably won't come because we don't know. So to have an opportunity to have some other groups to come, of people that we do know, that's city-sponsored, that will help, help all of us be able to use the facilities downtown more is, is, should be a goal.
Well, and we've got some great momentum, and jump in by the way, anytime, but we've got some great momentum. I mean, look what we did, one of the first actions that we took, based on the previous commission's work, and then we put in the allocation for the Greater Bond Neighborhood Action Plan, all right? We are working very hard with the French Town Neighborhood on the French Town Master Plan as well. I think we have an incredible opportunity and a lot of interest also to think of some new creative ways to master plan downtown. We have purchased the Northwood Center. I'm looking forward to that conversation of, what's that going to grow up to be? How, how are we going to redevelop that process? What about Midtown? What about the, what's the proper name of it again? Off Lake Bradford?
The, the former wastewater treatment.
Yeah, former wastewater treatment plan. We've got an incredible opportunity to master plan and redevelop that property that complements all the work on FAMU Way, but also complements the Greater Bond Neighborhood. I mean, we've got these incredible opportunities to really enhance the quality of life, and I'm, I'm excited. I think we're heading in the right direction.
And I, I think one of the things that we're doing with this plan too, and this kind of conversation, I, I don't know if I read it somewhere recently, but it talked about the fact that, you know, we're, we're piecemealing development. We, we aren't looking at it in a comprehensive fashion like what we're talking about here today. And, and it all kind of tying together at some point, but we, we piecemeal development in this community rather than, rather than it being all planned in a comprehensive way. And so I think we're now on that path, Mr. Mayor, as you, as you mentioned, because we're now starting to have that kind of public discussion about how we want to grow and where we want to grow and how it's all tied together.
Right.
We are one community. A lot of people don't realize that, but the Canopy Development will have an impact on the Bond community and what we're doing to revitalize Bond, and we've got to be a leader in encouraging people to see our community that way. We are one community, regardless of where you live in this community, and what impacts one part of the community ought to impact the other. So if crime is an issue wherever it occurs, everyone should be concerned about that and come to the table to help us address that issue.
Yeah, quality of life is, is difficult because we are such a diverse community, and that means a lot of different things.
that means a lot of different things to, to different people. You know, some people want to have a picnic under a live oak tree, and other people want to ride a scooter down Thomasville Road, and they're probably not the same type of people, alright? So, you know, how do we, yeah, but I do, to Diane's point, just the need to be intentional for who we're trying to include in the quality of life conversation, you know, our student population, our minority population, our retirees, and really being intentional, especially with city resources like downtown park and Cascades, because what, what I hate to see is when a new development or something comes online, and everybody gets excited, but there's still people who think, well, that's not for me, you know, they didn't build that for me, like, and they don't feel welcome. And I, and it's not because of the way it was built, it's just the intentional nature, and I think it could be the events that you host there, and those things that show, you know, all of our city facilities are for everyone, and, and how do we make sure across the spectrum, we're sending that message?
Great point.
Yeah, let, let me add a few things. I agree with, with Jeremy in, in terms of how does, and Curtis, you made an interesting point, because I don't think everyone looks through the same lens.
Of course.
As to what is, I call it beautiful, or, and Diane mentioned that the park, the entertainment downtown, and it seems to be obviously, and not saying it's right or wrong, targeted toward certain groups of people, but in, in an effort as, as the city leadership to include everyone, at some time, everybody should feel included in some way. May not all be the same time, in fact, that's almost improbable, but at some point, a group that I recognize should show up downtown. But I, I guess I just want to say that every community, we, we are a plethora of different peoples and different communities who have different perspectives about what is quality of life. Quality of life for me might mean just, you know, could y'all, could we get some more sidewalks over here? So that I'm not being run off the road. That might be my quality of life, whereas someone else's quality of life is to make sure we have some bike trails. I have one of those scooters that, that I refuse to ride on, but, because I'll get hurt, that's why. But I, my point is that when we start to plan and develop plans, we need to look big picture, holistically, rather than, and our parks are awesome, I mean, trails are awesome in Tallahassee, we ought to be proud. But I think we also cannot turn our eyes away from the other parts of the community that does not have that, and that need various other things too, because they're different. And I think that there are people across this community that really have not left their community.
I want to go last this time. Thank you. Give you a chance. The quality of life, as, as Elaine said, it depends on where you sit, the viewpoint is on where you sit. And I want to believe that one day, we all will believe that we're, we're one community. We may say that, but we're, we're going to be very disingenuous if we say that we're there now, we're not there now. In fact, so much so that there, there are conversations that speak of two Tallahassees, to the point that there, there are those who talk about the other Tallahassee, there are actually newsletters and documentation of stuff that they're putting out there that's, that's called the other Tallahassee. So until we're able to embrace the other Tallahassee into one Tallahassee, we've got to realize that the elephant in the room is, we've got to do more to, to make the quality of life of the other Tallahassee better, so that they will feel a part of one Tallahassee. So I, I think our goal is to improve the quality of life so that we get there, but we're not there yet, and we won't know that we're there until the people who believe that they're part of the other Tallahassee lets us know that, that we're there. So we, we got to make sure we engage those individuals, and it has to be intentional. It can't be that, you know, if they want to be a part, they'll come along. That hasn't happened. We can invite them, and then we can go to them, but, and some of us, we, we know who the folks are who feel that way, so we've got to, we've got to go and bring them. And, and what you said about the Bond Neighborhood, and Frenchtown, and Griffin Heights, and Providence, and many others, you're, you're right. But what we've got to do is we've got to prove that this time is for real.
Right.
Because there have been some promises made that have not been kept. Now, it doesn't matter that we weren't here when that happened, we're here now. And so our legacy is going to be, what do we do at this point going forward, to make sure that those communities feel a part of becoming one Tallahassee.
Great comments.
Thank you. Okay, Anna, if you want to come up, well, next, coming to public safety here, I'll turn it over you to kind of recap the.
Something fell.
The goal area. Thanks, Jason. The goal area, and then kind of what we've been hearing and doing, or seeing, and then the feedback.
Hello. So here in the public safety priority area, the goal, the draft goal is to be a safe, resilient, and inclusive community. Right here in this column, we've had, we hear, sorry, we have, we've heard in the community and from staff, which includes positive perception of community policing efforts, and a desire to curb property crime and combat gun violence. Over here, we have what we are doing or plan to do in the next five years. So increased community engagement, new law enforcement facility, and proactive policing initiatives and intergovernmental collaboration. During the activity, your initial impressions included several things, a lot of you are on the same page about, that you like where we are right now with community policing so far. You want to see further investment in community policing, and that involves a lot of bringing everyone to the table from all sectors, faith-based communities, business community, and focusing in on some issues. Also reaching out to kids specifically to reduce fear, and making sure the new police chief is fully committed to community policing. In the next five years, there are several things that we are looking at, including the new law enforcement facility, make it a state-of-the-art public safety complex, getting it together, all of the stakeholders to tackle in on some issues. Public safety is such a broad goal, that maybe we bring everyone together and focus in on one issue for the upcoming year. Unifying local resources to tackle those issues, using a technology like the Ring Doorbell to help combat crime, and realizing a return on investment in the, in the initiatives we have invested in. And then restoring, exploring restorative justice opportunities, and a universal jobs program. In addition, making a further investment in reducing human trafficking and sex trafficking in the community. And that about sums up all of it, all with a desire to reduce crime in general.
A lot, I see a lot of themes here, response, and just anything you want to call out that wasn't cosigned here, or now that you're hearing this back, now that you're hearing this again, you want to, you would like to emphasize?
Well, one of the things, Mr. Mayor, that I talked to Christian about in this area is the importance of our neighborhood and homeowners associations with respect to public safety, because we know when they are involved in their own neighborhoods and communities, then we, I, I mean, I can give you a personal example, in my neighborhood association in Tuskegee, when I, we moved in there, we had some crime issues, we, we built our neighborhood association, and I won't say we're crime-free, but it sure ain't what it was when we moved in there 25 years ago. And we see that across the, across the, across the community, when those neighborhood and homeowners associations are active, and they're engaging with law enforcement, then we see less crime in those neighborhoods. And so I think that's a very important aspect of our community policing initiative, in engaging with the, with police department and programs like Crime Stoppers in that respect. But I, I think it's also important that regardless of where a person lives in our community, they feel safe in the community. You know, it was interesting, I was reading an email from someone that had an issue, of course, with the, with the Wilani tie-in to Shamrock. And they were talking about the fact that, well, you know, my kids play in the front yard, and it's going to bring increased traffic, and what struck me was their kids playing in the front yard. My children were never able to play in my front yard where I live. I just, we never trusted that. And for those that don't know, I live on the south side of town, we've had some issues with crime, our home has been burglarized twice, both mine and my wife's car was burglarized, sitting in our driveway, and we just never felt we could let our children go out, certainly without our supervision in our front yard to play. And I know that a lot of my neighbors probably feel the same way, but we want to feel that way. And so until everyone throughout this community can feel that kind of safety in their neighborhoods, we've got work to do. And I certainly would like to see that happen in the next five years. That may be an ambitious goal, but, but I think that anybody, regardless of where they live in our community, ought to feel safe in their neighborhoods.
Agree.
Obviously, this is an issue that's been on the top of mind for a lot of people over the last few years, I think. We've made some good strides, and, and we're kind of in a, we're in an opportunity where we're searching for a new chief and building a new police facility that I think will be helpful, but I also, somebody's mentioned restorative justice, and I went to the, the meeting on that, and, and I was impressed by what I saw there. And I think when we start thinking about public safety and, and the human element, that we're not just trying to get bad guys away from, away from us, like, how, how do we engage as a community to interject things like arrest records, that kind of continue that sort of cycle and, and push it forward? You know, I'll be asking you guys later this month about small marijuana possession and restorative justice, I think all these things kind of work together, job opportunities all work together, but, but, but how do we get down to that, that, that human level of how we're interacting with people, and what goals do we need to set that's going to direct the appropriate resources, especially on things like gun violence? Do we need a percentage of reduction? Like, what's going to guide the level of resources we need to put in? Because it seems like we're making strides in different things, and we see certain rates going down, and that's all good, but I'm not sure what, where our end goal is, and what level of commitment we need to get, to make to get there quite yet.
Yeah, and one of the things that I mentioned here too, was that in the next five years, and I, I hope and pray that it happens prior to then, is that we're not on that list of the top 10, certainly not the number one most crime-ridden community in the state, but we, we don't even want to be, we want to be in the bottom tier of that list in five years. I hope it happens before then, and, and certainly we're making the investments, as you mentioned, Commissioner Matt Low, in, in, in causing that to happen. But we don't even want to be mentioned when those statistics come out in the future, because we have invested so much as a community in making that happen, and making all of our residents, and visitors, and guests feel safe in this community.
You know, to, to piggyback on what you just said, Curtis, we, we have to understand how data works to understand how we got on that list, because people don't dig down to understand how it's determined. One of the things that I've learned in working with the League of Cities is that Tallahassee is one of the largest cities, I don't know what, what, what number in the state of Florida.
Eight.
Eight. There are a lot of, there are 413 cities and villages, and when you think of Fort Lauderdale, it's not Fort Lauderdale, Fort Lauderdale has all these little communities with their own governing structure around them, and when a city the size of Tallahassee is being compared to those little places, it makes us look like we're, you know, we got a lot of crime, when, you know, it's in the numbers. We have more people, so there will be more. So we need to understand that. But while sitting here, I just wanted to just say that, so I want the audience to hear that as well. We're not saying that we don't have issues, but I'm saying, before we go running off with, with this, understand the data and what it represents, because a lot of times, we spot off statistics, and as my stat teacher says, you got, you got white lies, damn lies, and statistics. And you can make them say what you want them to say, we just need to understand how the data is collected, and then how it's reported, before we go saying that, you know, we're this and we're that. Sometimes the media doesn't care, their, their job is to sell the news. Our job is to make the news and make it positive, and make sure people understand how we got there. The other thing I was sitting here thinking, along with Commissioner Matlow, was talking about the small amounts of marijuana, one of the things that we need to look at too is, now the community is more pal, is more palatable to the community to call it hemp instead of marijuana, because we can't tell the difference. We need to understand also what we've done by locking up folks because they had marijuana, and the discretion that was used, as used on the side of the road. Sometimes, you know, if it's a kid from a good family, whatever, they may get to go home, but if it's a kid who may not be from a good family, somebody can decide to send them to Apple Yard. So we need to be consistent, and whatever it is that we're going to do, that impacts crime as well, and public safety. The other thing is, I remember before I was elected, I was having this conversation with Commissioner Richardson, and I was saying, some of this is mental illness, because if you got arrested for trying to sell drugs in this spot last night, and you back the night, the next night, selling in the same spot, then you might have a mental illness. So we got, that, that too is a part of public safety, because people are harming themselves and others, but it all, it may all go back to poverty. They may be trying to pay a bill, they may be trying to fee, they're breaking the law regardless, but if you're coming back to the same place, I got to question your, your business, your business skills. The, the other thing is that I think we need to work more closely and learn more from our public safety partners, such as the state attorney, to, to education in our community about what happens when this happens, what, what's the diversion program, what, you know, what are these kinds of things that happen? And have the state attorney, and you know how we used to do this, the thing about how bill becomes a law? Let's explain what happens when you break the law, you're arrested, you're adjudicated, you may end up here, you know, to explain the steps along the way. That may distract some, that may, that, that make someone not want to do that, because they don't have time to go through all of that, they want to live their real life, and not be arrested and go meet the state attorney. So I think that if we can educate the public more, that's also going to help our public safety. And maybe I'm crazy, but I'm not afraid to go into any community in our city. I live on the south side too, I'm not afraid to, to go wherever in the city. I love where I live, I love the people, I love how organically we created a flea market right there, where we get ready to celebrate the temporary park at Meridian Orange. And as far as I could tell, there was nothing illegal going on there, nobody's ever said anything about it. We're the spirit of a people who can make things happen, even though they may be being feel oppressed, or suppressed, or whatever, depressed, we find a way to survive. And I think that that too plays to the public safety, and we need to advertise or publish that, say that more, instead of talking about the bad things that are happening in a community, we need to talk about the good things that are happening, and make people want to come and see for themselves the good things that are happening. But in the past, many times, a lot of things have been said about the south side and Frenchtown have been negative, and we're doing our best to try to fix that and clean that up, but part of it starts with what we say out of our mouth about these communities. No one coming to town will know that there's a problem unless someone tells them that. And so I think that we can do a better job with our public safety in doing some of those things.
Let me add one thing. Within the city, I think that the training for police officers in community cultures is going to become extremely important, because when you stop me on the road, and you stopped Jeremy on the road, and we were both going, you don't speed, do you? That's a no, Jerry. But we were both breaking the law.
Public trust, I got to tell the truth.
Let me just say that I, I think that our officers, they do a great job. I mean, when you stop to think about, do you want to be an officer? In the culture we live in today, we should be applauding the fact that they've chosen it as a career, but we also equally should be committed to ensuring that they have the tools, not just the weapons, the guns, but the tools psychologically, emotionally, to deal with the various issues that come from different cultures in the community, because you might see a lot more crime in certain areas. Because you might see a lot more crime in certain areas than others, but guess what? The law should apply equally. I shouldn't get a longer term or anything, because I happen to be on, in, in a community. So, and it kinda goes back to what you talked about a few minutes ago. So I think that's critical, the whole training piece. And it's not really training, but creating that culture in, in, in the police force. And then the, the last thing I'll say is that we talk about being a safe, resilient, and inclusive community. That's the goal. We, we spend a lot of time on the safe side, and how do we become safe? But how do we become resilient? And what does that really mean? In every community? Just the, just the thought.
Yeah, Chairman.
Yeah, just one more point, and I forgot to bring it up. We talk a lot about how this needs to be a community. We all need to come together as a community, embrace our faith community, embrace our resources. How do we as a city take the lead and actually play a point on directing those types of activities that they're doing? So we have people who come to our office that wanna help, that are kind of on the street level, the grassroots level, know what's going on, you know, wanna mentor, wanna volunteer. They're kinda doing it in, in their own little world. But how do we bring them all to the table, see if there's resources, you know, whether that's access to a community center, whatever they need? But how do we throw, everybody who's trying to do something on one whiteboard and really direct it and, and, and get a little more data on who's doing what, if it's, you know, certain areas of town, if it's certain age groups, and, and really figure out how, how, how each individual person is addressing the issue? And then as a city, kinda take the lead on what areas need more attention?
Yeah, and I would, I think that piggybacks on what Commissioner Richardson said earlier in terms of neighborhood engagement. So I, I would expand that to community engagement. We've been talking a lot over the last year about it takes a whole city to address this issue. It's not just TPD, it's not just, you know, the, the measurement of how many crimes we had, what do we do about it? How do, how do all the models feed together ultimately for the better outcome? And, and this is a long-range issue. As I'm sitting here listening to your comments, I'm thinking about a, a metric that we, we hear about is third grade reading performance. That impacts public safety. There's no doubt about that. But we start at third grade and then you matriculate all the way through your, your K through 12 education. That's a long time. But we have to start there. I would be remiss if I didn't talk about our tempo program. So that will be one of those items that you put in, you say, this is a key goal, that in, in, in our targeted metrics. What, what is our audience? In this case, we estimate to have 7,000 disconnected youth in our community. 7,000! That's an outstanding number, an unbelievably large number. And you know, we've already engaged 600 plus of those disconnected youth with no recidivism. Now, I think that's probably impossible to keep up that rate, but Dr. Campbell Thomas on our staff is doing a great job in that sense. But that is a long-tail impact. That doesn't impact us next month or two months from now in terms of moving that needle. So those are some of the things in terms of what we would be doing and how we engage with others. I would add to that, the tempo program connects our youth with other programs in our community, exactly what you're talking about, Commissioner. It connects them with training at Lively, it connects them with workforce training, things of that nature. So to expand that network connectivity, really to have this impact, that probably is five years from now. That's not two months from now, six months from now. I think we'll see that kinda in the development of the plan, and that way we measure it.
Couple of comments real quick. First of all, I do wanna recognize Chief Outlaw, who's in the back of the room, who has stepped up at a very crucial time in this community to serve as police chief, Tallahassee Police Department, and move forward. And I certainly do appreciate his dedication. I also ask everybody to keep in mind that yesterday, or two days ago, we deployed the Tallahassee Fire Department Search and Rescue Squad, thirty minute, thirty-person squad to go help those on the east coast as well. And, you know, all of our thoughts to keep them out of harm's way. I'm very excited about the opportunity to build a 21st century facility for our police department. It is sorely needed. We are busting at the seams. And I think that is, we have the opportunity to build a, a structure, a facility, a home, a community center that we can be proud of, and quite frankly, that people will come from all over the country and say, you did it right, how'd you do it? And looking forward to that conversation with everybody as well. I agree. I think that we don't do enough touting our success, being recognized as one of the best communities internationally with some of the community policing efforts that we have, while acknowledging we have a lot of work to do and to move forward. I agree with your comments that we need to think differently. I was the one to put up the sticker about restorative justice. That, that seminar we went to was pretty powerful. It was. I'll be the first to admit, I don't understand all the elements of it. I don't understand exactly how that fits into Tallahassee. But I do think, and the chief was there, and I haven't had a chance to talk to him, I am curious to get thoughts on how do we move forward as the community? I mean, we're, we're all on the same page, and I agree. We are not gonna police our way out of this situation. And by the way, we are not the only community that's faced with violent crime. I talked to my colleagues across the state of Florida. You have other communities that are experiencing the exact same thing. But I do have faith and confidence in our department. I have faith and confidence in this community. Now, having said that, I do believe that we need to make sure that in those times where you have violent criminals that do need to be incarcerated, we need to make sure that our police department is fully equipped, properly trained, is a 21st century force, and we support them. I have everything down from, you know, the packages that we offer to hire, making sure that we are competitive in the market to be able to bring officers on, supporting our officers through, I've made it, no, no, no bones about the fact that I think our police officers and firefighters should have the same parental leave rights as what we just passed for every other city employee by simply amending their contracts, by supporting our men and women that are in police and fire. Increases and improves morale, making sure we have 21st century technology, exploring all of our relationships with state and federal partners as well. But at the same time, I also believe, just like you, that there are people that are incarcerated that should not be incarcerated. And we can do better as a society and as a community. And I'm looking forward to all of these conversations moving forward. And I think we are all 100% on the same page in this regard. It's exciting times.
Yeah. One of, one of the other things I wanted to highlight, Mayor and colleagues, commissioners, that I haven't seen in the, in the time that I've lived in this community almost 45 years now, is the kind of intergovernmental collaboration that's going, our law enforcement collective. And I think that, yeah, our public safety collective. And, and I think that almost more than anything else has contributed to, and Deputy City Manager Barber has been integrally involved in that, has contributed to the decrease in the crime statistics that we've seen. Because we haven't seen that kind of collaboration and cooperation in the past. And so that, I certainly wanted to highlight that, because that has been one of the contributing factors. The State Attorney's Office, the U.S. Attorney, that is almost unheard of in this community until recently, when all of that was brought together. And we saw, we've seen the result of it in terms of the decrease in crime in the community. So I certainly wanted to highlight that as well.
And if I could add, kudos to City Manager and Deputy City Manager. We're also working with parts of the collective to bring in training, sensitivity training that Sue Gallagher is coming to town to do on September 23rd. That morning, she's working with the, with law enforcement, the Sheriff's Office, TPD, and others will also be involved. And then in the afternoon, she will be working with the community, sharing information with us about things that we can, we can do better. She's from Broward County Children's Services Council, but she did so well at the Children's Summit, we thought we'd bring her back to talk to the rest of us who weren't in the room. And so we're doing our, I think we're, we're doing a, a yeoman's job in trying to strategize on how to make these things better. And so I think we're, we're moving in the right direction.
How are we doing on time, by the way, Christian?
We're great. I mean, we, we, we have three more to go, and I think we're gonna be right on time. We can move through it. Thank you. All right, Jason, if you'd like to come up and thanks, Anna. So I'm gonna turn this over to Jason, who's gonna walk us through the area for public trust, the priority.
All right, good morning. So for the public trust priority area, the goal is to enhance public trust through ethical business practices and transparency. So basically, what we're seeing is increased public discourse on ethics and transparency and a desire for more transparency, not only in local government, but pretty much at all levels of government. We're also seeing a lot of positive perceptions of some of the steps that the commission has taken over the past few months with regard to ethics and transparency. We're also seeing an organizational culture start to develop around principles of ethics and transparency. And that has occurred through enhanced training and policies. And we're also seeing a lot more public participation. So the feedback that we received in this area was fairly consistent. We are generally headed in the right direction. Trust is being built decision by decision, and that's with regard to the commission. We're pretty much off to a good start, but there's still a long process ahead. And we're also going the extra mile to ensure that we are instilling ethics and transparency within the organization. Some of the other just initial impressions were that there needs to be a better working relationship with the Ethics Board to ensure effectiveness and fairness. And in the next five years, the city should be basically a standard bearer when it comes to ethics and transparency. And that's pretty much in somewhat the feedback that we received.
Okay, great. So a lot of thoughts, comments here, and we'll turn it over to you. This is great insight for this priority area, and appreciate any more information you'd like to expound on.
What y'all thinking?
What, some of, some of what we, that I, I included as well, and I know Jason was doing a summary, was that there is, I know, Mayor, you, School Board Chair, and the Chair of the County Commission, you all have, I guess, a collective that you all work together on. I, I think it's gonna be important as we move forward that we all work more, work together more to engage, to make sure that the public is, is trusting not just a piece of this, but all of it, because it has impact. If there's distrust in one level, then it kinda spills over into other, other levels. As we've seen that when folks can't get something in one place, they come to our meetings, whether we have jurisdiction or not, they bring it to us. So having some way that we can deal with it publicly together might be a, a, a good thing to, to be able to do with some of the, some of the things that I, that I mentioned. And I think that more meetings in the community are gonna be real good, so that we're, you know, how people are trying to get to Mount Olympus. We can, we can go down, down the mountain to meet with, we meet with our constituents in, in a setting. So I think that that has been very, very well received, and I hope that we will continue that in the future.
Yeah, yeah. Elaine?
We didn't talk about it, but something that came to mind when, when I was first introduced to this particular area that's in the plans. I think it's going to be critical as we look at people who work for the city of Tallahassee, that we create a culture of ethical behavior that is not punitive. I'm trying to put that, I'm trying to frame it. So we had a conversation about performance, not performance, but being trained on ethics, doing the ethics course, and how that might impact their compensation. And I just guess I need to go on record, is saying that, especially from an HR perspective, that people who come to work every day and they do a great job, it, we may have some impact on the fact that you didn't go to an ethics course, but it should not impact your pay to the degree that, especially in a large degree. I'm in agreement that supervisors and managers should be held accountable for people who don't go. Because as a leader, I should, my people should go to the training. But let's say that, that I, we, that they don't go, but they are excellent employees. I, I think that there has to be a very interesting line drawn between, and very definitive, between my performance, what you paid me to come to work to do, and my not attending the ethics course. I understand the big picture, we want them to go, and I even made a comment, because I showed up does not really mean that I learned anything, it means that I attended. But I, I just don't want employees to be negatively impacted because they made a, what I call a bad decision, because they should've gone. But it still does not link directly to my year-long performance, that I did an excellent job for the city. So I'm a little conflicted in that. I want there to be accountability, and I want us to hold employees accountable, but I don't know if I want to, we're getting ready to give out an increase, and because I didn't attend, my whole increase goes away. I, I, I'm troubled by that.
Yeah, let me get to see Manjri, and then Chairman Turner, you. Reese?
Thank you, Commissioner. And I'll be brief, but I want, I want to address that, because this is the second year in which the merit raises or, or adjustments to salary will be tied to the completion of an ethics course. It's online, we're sensitive to the fact that meetings are difficult. And, and I agree with you, Commissioner Brian, you, we've gotta be really careful in how we do it. But last year went really, really well, that we said, hey, this, this is how important this is, that your increase in pay is tied to this. And we're gonna make sure that it's our job, ours as leaders and managers and supervisors, that you take the test. And, and it won't be, hey, you had this one opportunity to take it, and if you miss it, bad on you. I'm not aware of any situation where an employee didn't get a raise, but they understood the importance, because it was tied to the most important thing to them in terms of compensation. We're in it for the second year. I will be honest with you, I've, you know, I've held all of us the same standard. We took the test again, and you know, I've done more ethics training this year than I think I need in the rest of my career. And, and joining you guys, I've been to the FCCMA and, and the ICMA and everything else, but we, we still took the training, and there's a test, by the way. There's a test. It's a little white knuckle, you know, when, when you're taking the test and you're me, you gotta get it right. And, and so we paid attention to it, we took the test and we passed it. But I've heard more discussion from my colleagues and city employees that all, you know, we go out and meet with the different departments, and it's top of mind, and that really was the goal. The goal was not to be punitive, and I agree with you. We would not let it get to a situation where it's punitive, but it's gotta be top of mind. This is how important it is. It's working so far, we'll be, we'll be mindful to really not put anybody at risk, but to know that you can't just carelessly not do it. And by the way, this is how important it is. The test may not tell you, or the, the course may not tell you how to be ethical. In fact, I don't think it ever can. But it makes it top of mind to say, if I run into a situation, I need to be mindful and check with somebody else. So I appreciate your comments. I wanted to take the opportunity to address it, because I agree, we're just looking for those ways to make the culture understand at all levels of the organization the importance of it. And I think it's going well, but we'll stay closely in tune with it and not be punitive, but to be reinforcing of a positive culture. Thank, thank you for saying that.
Can I do a quick follow-up? I agree that it, it, it needs to be near the top, if not at the top. And the fact that it worked the first year, whether it was out of a thought pattern of, I really need to do this, or I sure want my increase, whatever it is, it doesn't, doesn't matter. We got to, to that end result. I would just challenge you to, in the future, somewhere down the road, after we get a culture that's kinda solidified, to disconnect money and an ethics test. I'll just, that, that, you don't have to do it now, because you, you're trying to create the culture, I'm assuming. So once you get there to some degree, that there is some other incentives for accountability, because that's what it basically is.
Yes, ma'am. Chairman?
I mean, I, I think, I think the City Manager kinda made the point. We know, you know, these trainings aren't gonna make people ethical. If I wanted to do something bad, the first thing I would do is go pass the ethics test, right? And, and I don't wanna draw attention to myself, that, you know, I didn't take this test.
Dude, don't show all your cards, man.
You know, I, I think we're all aware, you know, we're trying to create a culture here that, that everybody can buy into, and we can build, build public trust there. We can put a lot of things on paper, we can pass policies, which I hope we do. We have a lot of good recommendations, both from the Ethics Board and from this commission on, on different directions we can go. And, and if there's things that are helpful, I think, you know, we, we do need to put those in place. But we also, public trust is hard to measure, because we're probably not the people who should be measuring it, right? It, it's the public. So how do you define a metric of, of how the community feels about us? That's not us saying how they feel about us. And it, it's, it's a challenge, I don't really have the answer right offhand. But also, we have to realize our unique situation, and public trust, not having trust in your government is, is widespread at state level, is national level, it's not unique to Tallahassee. But we are in a unique situation where people think people with money can have more influence over their government than people without. think people with money can have more influence over their government than people without. And unfortunately, with the guilty plea, that kinda confirmed people's worst fears, that, that was happening in Tallahassee. So, I think it's incumbent upon us, not just what we adopt, but it, I mean, it's every decision we make, it's not gonna be something we can put on paper or an ordinance we adopt, but every decision we make, month after month, year after year, to really build, build that trust back is the only way. We really get the, the community saying, okay, they're doing the right things, and, and they're doing it for the right reasons. The other aspect of that is it kinda parallels public safety, but we need a culture within our city that's see something, say something.
Right.
You know, if you see a commissioner doing something inappropriate, or a colleague, or, or a boss, we, we need to create a transparent culture where people feel like they have the ability to come forward, feel like they're, they're protected, so if, if you knew something was going wrong, if you saw something going wrong, you know, it should be, we're a city that supports you bringing that information, information forward. So, I mean, I think we have a long, difficult process ahead of us, but I have no doubt over the next year, over the next two years, we'll be able to restore the public trust in the city of Tallahassee.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Curtis?
I'm gonna disagree with Commissioner Matlow on that. I, I don't think that this community distrusts its city government, and I don't think a guilty plea is an indictment of the entire city commission, former commissioners, it's not an indictment of any of our employees. I've lived in this community for forty-five years, and I've never sensed a sense of distrust of city government. There is no culture of corruption in city government in the city of Tallahassee, I just don't believe that. I think that we, we are at a point where there has been an instance, maybe two or three instances recently, in the forty-five years that I've lived here, where that public trust has been violated, and that has been addressed either through an ethics commission process, and now, because federal laws have been in the court system, and everyone is due due process. I'm keenly aware of that, given my spouse's position. But that is not an indictment of the city of Tallahassee, it is not an indictment of certainly this commission, nor previous commissions. And really, all the training in the world could not have addressed that issue. If, and like you said, if somebody wants to, you, you can have a thousand hours of ethics training, and if you still wanna be unethical, you will be unethical as an individual, if that's the kinda person you are. In the twenty years that I've been in elective office, I've never had that as an issue for me, because I'm an ethical person. I don't operate that way. No one has ever had to file an ethics complaint against me, because I don't operate that way in elected, I value the public's trust. And so, I, I don't know that we have a long ways to go in the city of Tallahassee, we've, we've got some instances that we've got to get over. We have done a tremendous job, I think, addressing that for the public, but in terms of a, a pervasive sense that there is distrust of our government, I, I don't feel that in the city of Tallahassee.
I think both y'all are right. I do. I agree to a certain extent that there is a strong trust in the city as an institution, especially in this commission. I also acknowledge that we've gone through some difficult times as well, absolutely, with the plea, the plea agreement, and look, you know, there's, you still have that formal sentencing coming up, which is gonna remind everybody of what Commissioner, former Commissioner Maddox had done. And so, yes, we're gonna have to stand together tall, keep our heads up, and remind everybody of the world-class services that we provide. I, I kind of agree with both you, and I respect the different opinions coming from different places as well. Couple of comments, I know we have time, we gotta, we gotta move forward to what. I, I am really looking forward to the conversation that we are gonna have this fall, that will, I believe, result in successful package, ethics package being passed. But I also want y'all to know where I'm coming from, because I will not leave a single stone unturned. I will go on the record and let you know that we have great men and women that are serving on the Ethics Board, but it is not a perfect process by any stretch of the imagination, and we gotta ask some tough questions. I am going to look at everything, not only that's been recommended and that we've brought forward, I wanna dig into the process, I wanna work with the Ethics Board to make the entire process the best it can be, 'cause it has to be. But when we have processes that are way too subjective, we're dealing with people's integrity, people's character in a public forum, and trust me, I'm all too familiar with this, then we need to make sure that we have a process that works. I think we have a responsibility as well to ask big questions, and I think we have an incredible opportunity with the retirement of the ethics officer, there's gonna be a transition, to ask questions like, why do we have a three-person office? Why do we have an ethics officer versus a law firm on retainer? We need to go through the budget of the ethics office. Instead of just rubber stamping every year, we have a financial responsibility to the taxpayers. Why is the ethics office physically housed in the office of somebody that they have jurisdiction over? Is there a more appropriate place in City Hall or in city government for the ethics office to have their own space? These are difficult conversations, these are a little uncomfortable conversations, but I think now is the appropriate time, as we go through this fall, to ask difficult conversation, ask difficult questions, have conversation, not in an adversarial way. We need to have the Chair of the Ethics Board with us to have these conversations, but nonetheless, I will ask. I will not rubber stamp just for the sake of rubber stamping. It might be in the end that we successfully pass every recommendation that comes, but it will not come without scrutiny and making sure that we have a process that protects character and integrity, but at the same time, requires the most ethical behavior of elected and all of those at the city that fall under jurisdiction. It's gotta be tough, it's gotta be fair, and at the end, I think that as a commission, we're gonna come up with an ethics package and a reformed ethics process, that everybody across the country is gonna again say, Tallahassee did it right, that's incredible, teach us how to recreate this in our community. But I say that now because we're about to go down this path over the next three meetings, and I wholeheartedly believe that we'll have a great ethics package that we will eventually agree upon and pass before the new year. That's just my thoughts. Anybody else? Move on.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, so we have, and just a poll check, thank you, Jason, we have two more areas and about, a little short of, about twenty minutes to run over that recap. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Diana, we're gonna dive into public infrastructure, and then Justin to wrap up with economic development.
Good morning. So, under public infrastructure, we have our draft goal, which is to be the leading publicly-owned utility that supports a growing and progressive community. What we heard during the different engagements is that there is a desire for clean energy, efficient and responsive power restoration efforts mainly after a natural disaster, and enhanced reliability. This was with, with respect to making sure that as we grow as a community, we're able to provide the same level of service. On the right-hand side is some things that the city's already working on, or that is recognized for, such as the best-in-class utility service and the adoption of the 2050 Clean Energy Plan. Today, the initial impressions that we heard are that you're proud of the Clean Energy Plan, that the city's doing a good job, and for the five years, where you see the city in five years, some of the themes that we see here are expanding and retrofitting underground utilities, continue to work towards, or starting to work towards the 2050 goal. Some of the examples here are increasing electric fleet and, and solar, but also discussing other alternatives. Enhancing green spaces, sidewalks, resurfacing roads, making sure that roads and sidewalks are high-quality, increasing accessibility to fiber, increasing restoration efforts in the long-term, public transportation alternatives. Want to say anything? And working and partnering with universities.
Comments?
Thanks, Dana.
I love all the ideas. I think the charge that we're gonna, and I agree with everything up there, I think the charge that we're gonna have, obviously, how do we pay for it?
Right.
And so, I would encourage, Raul, sorry to be looking at you, but you, you're the financing budget guy. You know, as we move forward, I encourage you to think outside the box and really turn over every leaf of what are the creative mechanisms for us to be able to move forward if one of our priorities is outside of our normal budget and normal CIP program? Are there other ways besides just straight bonding to meet our needs if we wanted to go that direction? Obviously, you know, there's no answer right now, but that's kind of, that's my two cents, 'cause I agree with, with my colleagues and everything that's put up there.
Wonderful. All right, thank you, thank you. And then finally, we're gonna...
As I did, uh, no, we're good.
Yeah, all right. And then Justin, if you wanna come back and recap economic development, and then we can kinda sum all of this up.
So, Mayor and Commissioners, that always tends to be the least sexy issue, by the way, the priority of infrastructure.
All right, let me back up, let me throw something out. This is the kinda stuff that I'm thinking about, I don't even know if it works. For instance, let's talk about burying power lines, that comes up every storm season, right? What if we had a neighborhood that came together and said, we want you to bury our power lines, we wanna do it now, and we're willing to pay for it? Do we have the opportunity, seriously, to create, say, an MSTU around a geographic area like a neighborhood, be able to divide it over a five- or ten-year period, place it onto the property taxes, therefore, if that neighborhood wanted to, while we also concentrate in other neighborhoods through general budget, do you understand what I'm saying? What, what are some of the creative ideas and mechanisms for finance?
Yeah, we have precedent in doing that with roads that used to be private in the community.
Right.
Where we've assessed liens to the properties to help pay off the, the improvement that's been done on those roads. So, there is precedent in the government to look at creative ways of doing those types of projects.
So, what I'm interested in is bringing us all up to speed, and it doesn't have to be a formal agenda item, it doesn't even have to be a workshop or anything, but when the time is appropriate, spend some time with each one of us to give us some ideas of some creative ways outside of just straight budgeting on how to tackle big infrastructure goals. Does that make sense?
Mayor, I agree with you, and I think when that report comes out of the conversation, that we look at all aspects of this community, because some communities, if they try, cannot get enough money to pay for underground utilities.
Sure.
But they probably need it more than the communities that have safe structural homes.
Sure.
So, I just wanna put that on the table as something to look at also.
I agree.
And, and I wanna add to that, that we don't wanna create a system of have, more of the haves and have-nots, because as we're trying to become one Tallahassee, this will be something that will divide us even more, because those who have money will be able to do this, and those who don't have money will suffer.
Well, I think as we move forward and we put together a plan, it allows us to focus our resources and be able to move forward on certain aspects of the community that might not be able to step up to the plate, but therefore, if you do have a community that's willing to pay for it to expedite it, we can move forward together.
Let's just make sure we get licensed sidewalks first.
Of course. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, could I point to an example where I think...
Sure.
As you approach these decisions, they, they are always very difficult, because there's not enough money, whatever the priority is. But you recall the Magnolia Trail, where extra dollars were pledged to underground the overhead electric in that area as that sidewalk trail project was moving forward? So, it was that opportunity, it was very, very expensive, Wayne will help me, multiple millions of dollars to do it. There was a sharing mechanism through our electric utility, which is one of the best in the state, but that was a tough decision, because it took dollars from something else, but you were at that moment in time that if you did not do it, it probably doesn't get done. So, I just kinda underscored, those are the moments that, you know, they come about, when they come about, and, and those are the decisions that have to be made.
Yeah. All right. Justin, why don't you walk us through the economic development, and we can wrap?
Thanks, Christian. The goal for the economic development priority area is to advance the city of Tallahassee as a competitive, innovative, and sustainable regional economic hub. And looking over the initial impressions that you all provided, the first one was great start with several ditto's. Second one was that we've got incredible opportunities in front of us to connect the workforce dots and retain talent in our area that are coming out of our educational institutions, as well as a desire to keep focused on our local businesses in terms of increasing their access to capital, and also making sure that we continue to think out of the box in terms of future economic development opportunities. With regards to where you all see the city in five years, we got a lot here, so I'll just kind of hit the high points. The first of which is broadening the city's private sector base through diversification and new industries such as manufacturing or distribution. We've also got stressing the, strengthening our university research and development partnerships, and strengthening the partnerships with TCC and Lively for training and readiness. We've got engaging our youth early on to provide career focus, so they are engaged and understand that they have opportunities in front of them. Over here in the middle, we've got a desire for, to have several master plans in place and to execute current master plans, whether it's related to the airport, the downtown master plan, the airport gateway, Northwood Mall, so on and so forth. Realizing the impact of strategies that will be implemented in the future, and increasing the level of playing field for people in our community, and then we've got the desire to figure out if we've got the opportunity to streamline the process for local entrepreneurs and businesses to begin new enterprises in the city. And with that, I'll open it up.
Yeah. Diane?
The leveling of the playing field is one that I put there, because we know people with money have resources to get more money. And one of the things that we need to make sure we do in our community is distribute the, the availability of funds for, even for those who may not have access to, to capital, we need to make that access available. And I wanna thank Raul and his staff for helping to put together a workshop to help folks write grants, to identify funding sources outside of what we have here, to be able to help their, their businesses. But what we, we also need to make sure, and I, I have a keen eye on this, is to make sure that the Office of Economic Vitality and the, the available funds there are also used to help homegrown businesses, or help to grow some homegrown businesses, to make sure that the money doesn't always go to businesses that already have money, but to grow some businesses, because we know that when, when the economy hit its downturn, it was a small business that kept us afloat, because big, you know, you can't be too big to fail, because you go first. But for the small businesses, they were able to sustain us, and in our community, we want to make sure that they get the attention that they need, and also wanna make sure that the dollars that are collected in blueprint for, to be used in this community, they're actually being used in this community. I know we wanna be a regional hub, but we're collecting in this county, and I'm hoping that the money we're collecting in this county is being used in this county. And, you know, as I said, this to, to being, we gotta put our own, he said, to me, we gotta put our own mask on first. So, we wanna make sure that we're doing what we need to do to make sure that Leon, Tallahassee, we can continue to be where we grow businesses. We're a government, college town, but we're also a town of small minority and women-owned businesses, that we need to make sure that they are, they have what they need to, to be successful and to prosper.
Jer? Yeah? Jer?
I think, yeah, I put on a focus just on local businesses and startups, when we think about our economy, the most resilient businesses in our economy are locally-owned businesses, that, people who have roots in Tallahassee, you know, we see time and time again, those are also the businesses that support our, our community events, when you look at, you know, sponsorships of different things, or people donating to GoFundMes and those sorts of things, like, we really need to engage that, that local entity, and then support how, how we're gonna grow that. I think a lot, one thing that we hear time and time again is difficulty navigating the permitting process in Tallahassee, and, and that's, that's more, people may have an idea for a business, but they don't know what, what they're getting into until they do. So, how, how do we as a city capture them at the front door and say, this is what to expect, this is what's coming, here's how we can get you through it? And then a, a side note I put on there is how do we collect feedback? How do we look at every business that's been created in the last five years and say, what were the challenges you faced to get open and to grow in our community? You know, what was the most helpful for you? Because without that, that one-on-one feedback, it, it seems that, that we ignore it, because I don't have item by item of things that we can improve upon, but I think if we ask the right questions, we can collect that data, and, and it could help us grow our local, our local businesses.
Elaine?
Yeah, one thing... Yeah, one thing that I probably continue to talk about and that's the airport. Um, I think that I, what I want to see is in some plan somewhere, and I, I've shared this with everybody, so no one's surprised, that there is some kind of dates specific, I don't care if it's ten years from now, but at least we know what we're looking at. Cause I have people asking me, why, why don't, why don't you all do something with all the property at the airport? You know, that's just a common theme. Uh, and we are doing something, that's the good part, but the other side of that is, until it, it becomes infrastructure-ready and some other key factors, then people only continue to ask the same question. So I want to be able to say in twenty fifty, twenty hundred, I don't care, whatever it is, but let's be able to say we have it written in the plan for various aspects of the property at the airport. That's all, I, I want to see that, so I'll keep asking about it.
Amen.
And, and the only thing I would add, uh, uh, the, the talent retention, uh, is one of the sticky notes I put up there, uh, but that, that cuts a number of different ways. It's talent retention in terms of the students that were graduating, uh, from our college and universities, uh, but also the blue collar talent. We need to be training and retaining them in our community, uh, as well, because as we know now, everybody's not going to college and the emphasis is starting to, to shift away from that, as a matter of fact. Uh, both are important, but we've got to make sure that we are focusing our attention on both, uh, as we move forward and create economic opportunities and job opportunities, uh, uh, in our community.
Yeah.
I noticed no one mentioned, um, uh, maybe I missed it, uh, raising minimum wage. There's, there's, um, conversation going on, um, around us about raising the minimum wage to fifteen dollars and, um, I think we, we've had to educate or say to some people that we, the city itself is now at twelve dollars per hour and it's a, it's a, a very progressive step in the right direction and I, I hope to see that we will, um, gradually work our way there. I know we can't get there today, we can't get there tomorrow, but maybe in, you know, in five years, we'll be there. Um, but we do want to make sure we look at that because that plays into economic development because you, you can't have an economy if you don't have money to spend. And so we, if we pay people, uh, people will spend the money and if we pay them well enough, they'll be able to be home at night to do homework with children, that will help third grade reading levels, that will help bring families out of poverty, they'll have a good benefit package with healthcare. It just, it, it is just a, a total package if we're able to provide those kinds of opportunities. And, um, to, uh, Commissioner Richardson's, um, um, comment about retaining, I'm glad he came back and, and talked about not just the young people taking on these jobs, but we have some, uh, some people who are young at heart-
Oh, yeah.
-who are being trained to do some of, some of this work. Now, we may not be able to climb on a roof and doing the roofing, but surely we can send somebody up there to, to get it done because we, we own the company. But, um, I, I want to encourage, um, those who are not just coming out of high school or whatever to also seek those opportunities for, for training, to, to be able to help our economy as well.
Great comments.
And I, I'd like to agree with, uh, Commissioner Williams-Cox too on the, uh, the, uh, minimum wage increase. I'd like to see us maybe in five years be one of the leaders in the state, uh, in that regard in paying a fifteen-dollar minimum wage. And I think if we set that as a goal, then certainly we can start, start to work towards it-
I agree.
-at this point.
I agree. I am hopeful that it makes the constitutional, uh, amendment language, uh, standards and receives enough petitions that it's actually on the ballot for next year statewide. That's my personal goal, but, um, my personal feelings, but I agree. I think that that is, uh, a concrete solution that can come out of today that, you know, let's put together a plan so that we could be-
Right.
...one of the leaders in the state, if not the nation, on setting minimum wage for our employees. Let's be very clear that unless there's a constitutional amendment that's passed, we are prohibited by law from, uh, impacting the private industry outside, but we can set the example as a city government.
We, and we also want to be very careful that, um, our employees, um, that, that we don't get left behind as commissioners because the number of hours that we put in, if we do the math, it's probably less than twelve dollars an hour.
Thank you.
And it's okay, we signed up for it, but I'm just saying.
Jeremy?
Yeah, I, I, I would echo that. I, I think it's great, I, I think the community wants to see this, you know, we've seen, I, I think the county has a minimum wage, I think TCC said that, that they do twelve dollars an hour. How do we get all of our, at least our government partners, FSU, FAMU, and say, you know, this is a community value? How can we all collectively get to an endpoint together?
Right.
All right, well, wonderful. City Manager, I'm gonna wrap, would you like the, you have any other comments before I kind of close, close the session today?
No, Christian, I want, just want to make sure you kind of describe the next steps.
Yes.
Kind of the timeline, next steps, so we all know what to expect.
Yeah, sure. Well, I mean, today has been fantastic. I mean, one of the consistent themes I'd just like to call out, and we've said it today, but the way, um, our neighbors and visitors live and experience, uh, our community, the way our departments and the way we work, uh, your vision and direction for the way we tackle some of these challenges and solutions is all interoperable. There's not just kind of one angle to come at this on, there are consistent themes of how, uh, many lenses we have to come at these, um, big opportunities through. And, um, you should expect to see as we move, um, move forward with our strategic plan, an approach that reflects that interoperability. So two quick points to make, I mean, tactically, just to kind of put us all on the same roadmap, I mean, our conversations, um, and where they've been today have been around the, the vision and the priorities and goals that connect to that vision. Um, our community engagement and all of our extensive listening sessions have been in the same area and into the objectives and our ongoing, uh, back and forth and work with the departments to take their strategic directives and their strategic goals and objectives and then bring those targets into a strategic plan that is interoperable, that meets the city vision, the broad vision, that's where we're going and that's what you should expect to see. So for a timeline, um, as you mentioned, uh, we plan to bring the draft, five-year strategic plan to you in October. And before that, we'll take today's input, we'll continue to work on our draft and our framework, weaving that together through our strategic document, we'll have a launch, we hope to present that, um, on multiple platforms, including a document, but also an engaging website, um, and, and some announcements for that. And then we'll be briefing you, obviously, in between then, um, in our one-on-one updates.
And Christian, do you envision, or City Manager, do you envision that annually we will sit down and kind of review where we've been and what progress we've made and then make plans for the next year and the next five years after that? Is that part of the process?
Yes, sir. Thank you, I appreciate you asking that question because it's how we use this tool. So that will be a very thorough exhaustive document, uh, that will have very discreet metrics that we intend to hit. Some will be five years in nature, uh, many will be annually and so we need a check-in point. And so you know that, that the city commission historically has held a retreat in January and said, you know, what's on our minds, what's our priorities? This will help guide that and we will measure ourselves. Uh, and the goals and objectives will be aggressive, some will be natural, some will be, as, as you've heard the term, stretch goals. We may not reach them, but if we don't set them and aspire to reach them and measure ourselves against them, then we don't get there. So that's fully the plan. Appreciate that question.
And Jeremy?
Yeah, and, and I mentioned this to Christian in, in our briefing, but I just want to make sure, before we adopt it, you know, we've spent months and months on this plan, we make sure we put it out to the public-
Yeah.
-have them have ample time, um, to read over it, give it, give any, any feedback and make sure, um, everybody knows what's in it, you know, we're all agreeing to this to be our, our five-year vision and, uh, take the time to have that and then, um, push into, push into the future with it.
Yeah, that's great. Diane Lane, any closing comments?
Great job.
Yeah.
Um, someone asked me in the audience, where, where are we going? What, do we think that, did I think that this was useful? I think it's very useful. Uh, I think any opportunity when someone asks you what you think, is your opportunity to tell them what you think and what you're hearing, because if you don't, then I think that we would be doing a disservice to those who sent us here to not share what we're hearing and what we're seeing and it's just gonna make us better. So, uh, kudos again to, uh, Christian and his staff and, uh, all those who support this process, everybody who's feeding into this. And Christian, is your work group here? Members of your work group here?
Yes, absolutely, so-
We, we want to recognize, I, I think we should recognize that work group.
Absolutely. So, um, you're mentioning our strategic work group that was community members and staff that had the opportunity to review our mission and vision and values. This is not my team, so if you, I see, I saw, I, I've seen several of you today, if you're still here, can you stand up so I can acknowledge? I mean, Devin, I know you were on the-
All right.
Devin, Lizzie, uh, thank you, thank you all, Dennis, Amy, thank you very much.
Christian, uh, Talitha Edwards was on the group, she was here earlier, but I think she's running her circuit, I saw the van leaves and so she had something to do, but she did stop in briefly.
Yeah, she did.
She gave us some comments too, yeah, she's been helpful.
And on that note, if you did have comments that you would like to give us, we are right here at the front, Levania has collected some already, thanks.
Elaine?
Yeah, I, all of the comments from everyone that was on each of those boards, I hope they, we didn't talk about them, but I hope they show up in their entirety, uh, obviously collapsed for duplications, but I think this was a great step in the right direction in the process of strategic planning, uh, and I'm excited and, and waiting to see the tactics.
I agree. Christian, job well done, you and your team, City Manager, job well done and as always, it's a pleasure to serve with each and every one of you. See y'all tomorrow at five o'clock for the, uh, I think we got a little meeting tomorrow at five, Intergovernmental Agency somewhere?
Yeah.
Five o'clock tomorrow, see y'all then. We'll be calling.